Good evening and welcome, everybody. Thanks for joining us for this public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing for an Eagle permit application related to construction of a pond for activities associated with that in Hayes Township in Charlevoix County. Before we get started and get too far into it, I just have a few things to go through. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'll be your moderator for the public hearing tonight. Kind of going through an introduction right now, and the big thing to know is that this public hearing is actually going to be in two parts. There's first going to be a public informational session, and that's going to consist of about up to a 10-minute presentation on the proposed project, followed by a question and answer session, which will take us to around 6:30. At which point, we're going to move into the part where we can make, where anyone can make an official comment for the record on this project and application. Everyone will get a chance, and you can make your statement, and we'll go through as we go along how we're going to go about doing that. We're also going to talk about where to find other information and then who to contact with further questions. And then just a couple logistical things for those of you who haven't joined us for an online public hearing before. At this point, all lines are muted during the hearing. If you have a question at this time, you can submit your questions using the question box in your Zoom toolbar. And then we are recording this hearing. This will be uploaded to our YouTube channel in a couple days, and you'll be able to access it and rewatch it, watch it if you wish. When we get to the question and answer portion, and when we get to the public hearing portion, you'll be able to raise your hand. We'll go through how to do that kind of internal to get to that point. All right. So at this point, I'd like to introduce the other Eagle staff we have on the line or allow them to unmute their microphones, turn the cameras on, introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name is Scott Rasmussen, part of the Gaylord Office and Environmental Quality Analyst.
Hi, I'm Joe. Joe Haas. I'm the district supervisor for the Cadillac and Gaylord Resource Programs with Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. We cover, I cover the 22 counties between the two field offices.
Hi, I'm Erin Emington. I'm out of the Gaylord District Office. I'm an environmental quality analyst. And I have just recently taken over Charlevoix and Emmett Counties. However, this permit application is not being processed by me.
All right. Thank you all for joining us for the hearing and for those introductions. All right. So at this point, we're going to start the public information session. I believe we have Steve Voice on the line who's a consultant for the applicant. And so Steve, we're going to find you in the audience here and unmute you. And then before we get started, I guess, though, I have your slides here. So I'll be controlling those. Just let me know when you want to move to the next slide. And I think a cross section of the project or part of it was added at the very last slide. You can feel free to talk about that as well. And then if you just want to keep it to about 10 minutes to keep us on track, it'd be appreciated. Yep, I can hear you, Steve, right there.
Yes, I am. If you want to bring up the first slide, that'd be great.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay, this is a slide just to give you a perspective on where the projects located. The, this is the point. Are you able to see my cursor?
No, we cannot see it.
Okay, well, okay, in the upper right-hand corner, there's the Boyne City Road and Quarterline Road, Boyne City Road coming, you know, going kind of southeast to northwest. And then the Quarterline Road perpendicular or parallel across the top of your, your screen there. The, the proposed project, the Law Pond is identified just below Quarterline Road. Woods Creek comes in from the north and comes into this historical pond area. Woods Creek then winds through a series of wetlands, kind of in a west-southerly direction. You can see when you cross the road in the middle, that's Woods Creek Drive. It crosses over through that. You can see Woods Creek is actually identified on the photo. This is a Google Earth photo, but it says Woods Creek, and it goes into this other historical pond area. That's the Bartlett Pond that was permitted last year to get, to have the dam or actually replaced with an outfall control structure. So we can regulate the, the actual levels if it gets too high or it gets too low. That's, that was the problem ahead when the beavers were there as they were flooding out quite a bit of, of land. But that was issued last year, March 16th. And then from there, it drains through a series of wetlands down to Lake Charlevoix in the lower left-hand corner of your, of your screen. Do you want to go to slide two, Ryan? This was the original submission that we made to Eagle. Our idea in submitting this was that here's this historical pond feature that the owner wanted to restore. It's very clear that there was a dam there. There's even a little bit of a ridge at the bottom. If you look on the left-hand side, there's a little bit of a ridge at the bottom. Appears to be man-made that kind of forms a dike, and then to the left of that is, is the historic dam. I've got an arrow. It says location of historic dam pointing to that. The, on the left-hand picture, the line, it's kind of hard talking when you don't, I can't point to it, but the on the left, left-hand picture, there's a line, a bold line kind of going up the middle with an upland on the left side, wetland on the right side. So if you follow that line, it goes north, and then it kind of curls around this upland island, or actually more appropriately, a peninsula, comes back down, and there's a kind of a lobe of wetland in there. And then you can see where Woods Creek comes in from the north into that area. Woods Creek right now comes into that area, drains kind of along the wetland, upland-wetland boundary of that lobe, and then cuts across and goes right down the wetland boundary to the, and through the location of the historic dam. There's also an artesian well. You can see that on the north side of the plan. There's an artesian well that's been there. We don't know how long, but for quite a while, currently dumping, you know, just draining open drain, cold water into this area. So the original idea, taking a look at this and given what we, you know, saw historically in, in terms of the other pond, was to try to restore this pond, rebuild the dam and flood it back out. The problem that is there is that this whole feature, well, it's a fairly large feature. The, it is filled up with a bunch of accumulated sediments, organic matter, silt. It's very loose. There's no bottom to it. You know, you'd think I was smarter in evaluating it, but I, I went there to try to do some wetland delineation, tried to step across the creek and sunk up to my shoulders practically in the muck. It's, there's no bottom to it. It's, it's a very dangerous situation. And that, that runs along the whole upland-wetland boundary, including on the north side, northwest of the upland island or peninsula, and, and south of it, all the way down to the, to the outline. So part of the problem is that there's these sediments that are pretty much a hazard and extremely dangerous, but and it's occupying the basin of the former pond. So the original idea was to, to dig that out and, and create, and restore or create, you know, reestablish the pond, the dam, and, and the pond. So that on the right side was our original proposal. Then this, in this submission, all of the pond is located in the wetland because that's where it was historically. When we submitted that and then got into discussions with Mr. Asmus, and basically to discuss the fact that to do this, it would require over almost 17,000 cubic yards of dredge, total wetland impacts of 1.6 acres, which would make it a red file. It would be a pretty high-profile thing, you know, and just in terms of impacts, because the, the pond has filled in and turned into wetland. It, it has significant wetland impacts. Even though they weren't, that wasn't the condition of it before the pond was there. So if you go to the next slide, that would be great, Ryan. So we, we discussed it amongst ourselves, and we discussed it with Mr. Asmus, and we the problem we had is that if we tried to move it over to the upland, the we would, it would require, it would require a berm on the, on the east side. The original plan didn't require that because the wetland on the east side is actually a fairly sloping wetland, and it was just the natural terrain that used to hold this pond, apparently, because it goes up quite a bit, considerably higher than the surface of the pond we were proposing. So it would just seek its natural level, but when we moved it over, it would require us, you know, to move to build a berm. So this is an interim proposal where basically half of the wetland is, half of the pond is in wetland and half is in upland. Again, an attempt to try to minimize the impacts. We were able to do that. We brought it down to a dredge of 7,500 plus or minus yards, which is almost a reduction of almost 10,000 yards. In total, when, well, I'm sorry, I have the impact wrong, the 1.6 acres. Pardon me. That's not correct. That's leftover. It was like point nine, nine tenths of an acre. So I apologize for that mistake. So in discussing this further with Mr. Asmus, and it became clear that in order to do the pond in this fashion, since the impacts were over a third of an acre, we would require to do wetland mitigation. So again, we huddled up and put our design brains together and came up with a second revision, and that's the next slide. So the plan that's, that is now before the department, this is our second revision of the plan. The, the majority of the pond is in, is in upland. That bold line, you can see again on the left-hand side, the upland-wetland boundary, and it goes around the peninsula and up towards where Wood Creek, the artesian well and Wood Creek, Woods Creek are in. So on the right-hand side, the, the proposed restored or replacement pond, the majority of the pond would be totally located in uplands. There's a small section of it because of where Woods Creek comes in and the artesian well comes in. The, the current situation is that creek basically floats on these sediments and kind of wanders through them. It's a real shallow, narrow and shallow feature. I suppose it gets wider during rainstorms, but it's pretty shallow. So it no doubt heats up quite a bit. And our idea was to deepen that in part to get rid of the dangerous sediments that are in that location. They're real close to this road, and it would be an area that, that is pretty hazardous for anybody utilizing this area. And then to discharge that to have, have that open up into an upland-based basin that would be dug to a depth of 10 feet approximately to provide a cold water habitat. We'd restore the outlet right above the historic dam, and it would discharge, and you can see where it says proposed outfall control structure, historic dam location. There's an unnamed creek that comes in from the east, and it would join just about at that same spot where the, where the dam was. It's just a downstream from it. So you'd have the unnamed stream coming in. You'd have the outlet from the pond and the artesian well joining it there and proceeding down Woods Creek and down the, down the water course. So that's the plan before the department. The total dredge of that area north of the main body is 1,333 yards, and the wetland impacts have been reduced to 0.138 acres. So that's our project. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Steve. This is, I think this was from the application, and this was just added in here as a visual reference. Is there anything you wanted to add to this slide, or do you want to move forward with the Q and A?
No, I think those are in the are in the application. They basically show the, the different cross-sections through the area. I think the thing to, to note is one of the things that was very difficult to, to do when, when we were asked basically to consider moving the pond into the upland or to at least evaluate that as a way to reduce impacts. This pond is actually going to be above the level of Woods Creek. There's a pretty significant drop from the north to south. And so the pond's going to be above Woods Creek. We are actually gonna, I suppose it would be called a bit of a berm, but we're gonna, everything will be located, including the berm would be located in the upland, but it's going to be above the level of the creek until then. The outfall will dump it back down into the original, original basin, but it, there is a significant fall there. So anyway, that, this just shows the cross, this just shows the elevations at different cross-sections.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, we can move right into kind of the question and answer portion of this. You can either submit your questions using the Q and A box in your Zoom toolbar. There's a few in there right now. If you have a question, you can go ahead and type it in there. Or you can click on the hand icon that's at the bottom of your screen, and that will raise your hand in Zoom, and will kind of go off, you know, kind of back and forth. We'll be calling on people who have their hand raised, and they can ask their question, and then I'll be reading off the questions that are in the Q and A box. If there are people who are on the phone right now, you can type in pound two on your phone, and that will raise your hand in Zoom, and we'll call you, and we'll be able to unmute you at that point. So with that, the only other thing, only other thing I wanted to, point I wanted to make is that this is specifically for questions and answers. So this is the time to ask a question on the project. If you have a statement that you want to make or want to make a statement for the record, that's going to be a little bit later on in the hearing portion. So I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and first, you know, ask a couple questions that have been typed in, and there, there are two that are related. So I think I'm going to read them both off. One is may the public visit the site, and then another question that's related, seems related, is how many people frequent the area? So is there one of our panelists able to answer those questions?
I, I suggest Steve might be the best to answer that.
I might be, but I'm not sure I know the answers to that. What are the two questions, Ryan?
Yeah. So made the public visit the site, and how many, how many people frequent the area? Or maybe we can reframe that. Do people frequent the area?
I think the intent is certainly that people will be frequenting the area. There are a variety of, the law's own of considerable amount of property, and they've got various outdoor recreational features, and you know, there's trails and there's, there's, you know, it's a large piece of property. And I assume there will be quite a number of people at various times at different locations. That's part of the reason for the concern about these deep bottomless sediments. They're, they're pretty hazardous. I would, I, I'm not kidding when I say I was pretty, pretty worried. And actually, the project engineer, one of the project engineers went in on that north end as well. So I think that's part of the problem, but the number of people or the frequency, I have, I have no knowledge of that. I'm, I'm not part of the, you know, planning of things at that point. I'm, you know, doing this application. In terms of the permission to use the property, that would certain, that would be up to the laws. That's not my permission to go.
All right. And I think you touched on this a little bit already, Steve, but this somewhat related, so I wanted to bring this. Has anyone ever been hurt or lost in the muck?
Not to my knowledge.
All right. So at this point, I think we're going to go to a raised hand. But we don't have a raised hand at this point, so I'll keep reading off. Here we go. We got one. Spencer McCormick. We are going to unmute you on our end, and then you'll be able to unmute yourself and ask your questions. Okay, so it's, yep, looks like you're unmuted.
You can hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ryan, and thank you, Steve, for that presentation. From what I understand, this project, the purpose of this project is to address a lot of those soft sediments that are, that you're considering dangerous or a hazard. By moving the pond into the upland, are you actually addressing those soft sediments? Because you'd be digging the upland then. So I guess it's not clear to me whether or not you're actually addressing those soft sediments.
That's, that's a good question. The yes, we're addressing the soft sediment first. You know, the, the purpose of the pond originally, or the project was to, to restore this pond. That's, that's, you know, in its simplest form, there was clearly this historical feature, and the laws wanted to, to restore that again as a outdoor recreational opportunity on the property and, and with their plans for the property. In, in doing the assessment work, I don't know that I'm the first one who discovered it. I'm the, you know, I'm the first one that, to my knowledge, that discovered in terms of this, this process, you know, this process, discovered that these sediments were there. And only when I was describing it to the, to the engineer, did I get notified that one of, one of the engineers or surveyors out there, you know, fell in or fell in or stepped in as well. And so that we knew that it was a pretty extensive problem, and we did some investigation, and it's, it's all along that boundary. You know, I, I couldn't get in to find out how, how far it goes into the east because you can't, you can't access it. You gotta go through those sediments. But it looks like it's just pretty much a basin of, of these, of these kind of quicksand-like sediments. So in order to, so when we did the proposal, it was okay, we can, this is how we can accomplish it. We'll dredge them all out, and they'll be a pond. Well, you know, and then I went through the, the resource implications of that. So in moving it all the way to the upland, the way we are proposing to deal with the sediments is that's why there's that 1,300 cubic yards of dredge. We're still proposing to dredge out that northern arm, if you will, that connects from the main body that we're proposing in the upland to the where Woods Creek kind of comes in from the north. And if you will, makes a right turn to the west. We're planning on going all the way up there because we know that's where the sediments are. And then if you cross over at that point, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty decent upland on the other side. But at any rate, if that will be, those would be dug out, and that's the 1,300 cubic yards. There will be a berm that is constructed to the west in the upland, to the west of the upland-wetland boundary. And that berm is going to basically be higher than the wetland edge. That's why I was emphasizing in the beginning that it is, the pond is higher. So there'll be this berm holding the west and south sides of the, of the pond in. Part of it's the natural grade, but there's a part of a berm so we can get, I think it's a 638 elevation that we're proposing for a divine design elevation. We will have that berm, and initially what we plan on doing is basically putting signage up to advise of the hazard. But certainly, if, when it gets constructed, that doesn't seem like it will be sufficient and/or Mr. and Mrs. Law confer with their attorney, and this, you know, they decide something more is warranted. I would assume that because it's kind of hidden behind the backside of that berm, that they could, you know, fence, polder all of it to keep people out of there if that's necessary. But initially, we're talking about signage, maybe some kind of obstruction so that people utilizing the pond to the west won't, won't be tempted to go in there. And, you know, other ways that we can discourage access to those, those areas. But, but again, that, you know, there's a number of options there to, to deal with that. We'll put the signage up, do fencing, maybe put some large boulders or, or something that, you know, will be sufficient, or all three, you know. So hopefully that addresses your question.
Yeah, and just a quick, thank you, Steve, and just a quick follow-up to that. If, if, is, you know, as it stands now, the way the condition of the wetland is, is there any reason for a person to go in there right now? Just because, you know, with the pond there, now you're, you're kind of drawing people in and maybe creating a hazard that wouldn't be there normally.
Well, yeah, there's, I mean, this has been near other portion. I mean, this, this area is, you're asking, is there any reason for people to go in now in its current condition?
Yes, correct.
Okay, well, not, this area, as you saw from the sketches or the drawings, there's an existing trail system slash two-track system, I guess. The road goes right by this area. It's kind of an open area. No, it's not an open pond, but you can see the creek coming. You've got the creek. You've got this open area. I've got an upland island. I mean, it's got its own set of attributes. It's immediately south of another access lane that comes across the wetland. It's, it is an area that, that will have a number of people in that area. I, I don't know. I mean, I obviously don't know. I don't own the property, and I'm obviously not there controlling or deciding where people get to go, but you know, certainly, you know, I don't know. I grew up in a subdivision, and the first place I went as a kid was down to the creek to catch bullfrogs. Or, you know, or see if there's any fish swimming up the stream. And, you know, so that, that's, it's already somewhat of an attractive nuisance just by the fact that the creek's there, and it's close to existing trails. So, but again, I don't know how many people are using it now, and how many people will use it in the future, but it certainly is a feature that would attract people to it, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you both. We're going to have to get moving with some other questions here. And let's see here. If you have numerous questions that are in the, the question and answer box, I'm going to try to get to a good variety and get, try to get everybody's least a question answered, even if you have multiple ones in there. All right. So has DNR Fisheries Department then consulted or reviewed the permit application?
Yes. Yeah, we copied them on all the public notices as well as DNR Wildlife also.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Scott. Is the plan to have the pond be a water feature for their, for the golf course? I think this was touched on a little bit. I don't know if there's anything you want to elaborate on, Steve.
No, to my knowledge, no. It's not even near the gulf full.
Is this, isn't this part of a resort complex, and their private resort users would be exposed to the danger?
I don't understand the question.
Yeah, that's all that's here.
What, what I didn't, what is, what is?
Oh, you didn't, isn't, isn't this, I guess, isn't this part of a resort complex, and their private resort users? I guess, will their private resort users be exposed to this danger?
Well, I don't know about resort. I know this is part of the law's property, and, you know, they have various activities and features on the property that they utilize, and but, you know, I'm not, I'm not part of that. I mean, I, I applied for the permit on behalf of the laws, but I don't know how they use the property, what their plans are for the future. That's, that's, you know, beyond the scope of this application and, and my knowledge.
Okay. Thanks for that. Why don't you put the trout pond in the upland by Boyne City Road?
I guess the simple question is that's not where the historical pond is, nor is there a water source to, to support that pond. I mean, part of the problem is, you know, in doing a pond, if you need a water source.
And then this is a question, I think it's looking for clarification. So the proposed, proposed pond with outlet to Woods Creek?
The, yes. The, the, the existing historical pond is on Woods Creek, as is the downstream pond. The proposed pond, as we, the relocated pond, if you will, or the replacement pond would be, it would, Woods Creek would feed into that feature and, and be, and the feature would discharge back to Woods Creek. So it's only the, a, a segment of Woods Creek essentially that is currently kind of flowing haphazardly over the, over the sediment surface, by and large, kind of tucked up against the upland-wetland boundary, would go into this deeper water basin and then back to the main channel of Woods Creek where, where it doesn't have the accumulated sediments.
Okay. Thank you. And how long has the property been wetlands? I, when did the historical pond fill in?
I, I don't have any knowledge of when it exactly filled in. It's mostly filled in right now with the stream going through it. It's estimated, we estimated that the pond, the downstream pond has been there probably since the 50s or 60s, and this is a larger but pretty similar feature. I guess it would be logical. It was probably put in around the same time, but I, I don't know. I haven't, I don't have good information on, on who did what when, but it is pretty much filled in now.
Okay. Thank you. And we're going back to a question about visiting the site. Can the public visit the site during the next 10 days, the public comment period? So I'm assuming their question would, you have.
I have no authority to give, I have no authority to give that permission. That's a liability issue potentially, and it's not. I'm not the owner of the property. I have no authority to give that permission.
All right. So just to quickly speak to that, because it seems like it's repeated a couple times. It's private property. So you need permission from the property owner to access, or otherwise you may be trespassing.
Correct.
Yeah, I think, I think that helps. Thanks for that clarification. Are there fish in Woods Creek? Um, are there fish in Woods Creek?
There's not fish in the section of Woods Creek that, I, I've not seen fish in the sections of Woods Creek that I have evaluated on this project or on the other project. I assume there may be some downstream from the, the downstream pond, but I've not seen fish in the creek currently.
Okay. And we're starting to, this might be our last question. We'll see how long it goes. We're getting towards the time when we need to move on with the public hearing portion. Uh, but this question is an attractive nuisance requires the future to be man-made and maintained. The wetland was clearly not maintained and therefore would not be attracted nuisance. However, the landowner would be liable for a maintained pond. What will the landowner do to prevent accidents associated with the maintained pond?
What will the owner do to what?
What would the landowner do to prevent accidents associated with the maintained pond?
I, I don't even know where to begin with that question. I don't know. What accidents are we talking about that are gonna happen with the maintained pond? I mean, you know, they're gonna do, the pond will, they'll create the pond. If it's on private property, as Joe, you know, indicated, the access to, you know, by the public would require um, permission from the owner. Um, and as far as his guests who have permission, I, it will be up to the laws to, um, you know, to discuss any hazards associated with this feature or any other feature on the property.
Okay, and there was a clarification, like a person falling in, curious child, elderly person?
Well, I mean,
Just to provide some additional thought on what the question was.
Right, well, you, you, you're gonna have a pond feature. I mean, I don't know. I mean, there are both natural and man-made ponds on a lot of properties and I guess I'd leave it to the laws to decide if they think uh, the laws and or their attorneys to decide whether or not there's any posting that needs to happen relative to the existence of the pond. I guess part of the issue is that the, the pond will, the, the man-made pond will be made to have um, shallow side slopes at the, around the perimeter of the pond so that you, you know, you don't have a little kid or an elderly person falling into deep water over their head. That, you know, if they got into the pond, that at least, you know, they'd be in shallow enough water to hopefully stand up and walk out. Um, and solid enough bottom to stand up and walk out. Um, that's part of the design features. Now, obviously we've made it deeper, but that the depth to the ten-foot depth is in the center of it. So we start with some shallow side slopes and then go to a deeper pond. So I think part of that, the answer to that question is, is the way we designed it should, should assist in, uh, making it safer for a small child or elderly person who finds themselves in the pond.
Okay, thank, yeah, I think that does help. Thank you very much. Um, we're at the point, we have to move on to the hearing portion of this. Uh, I think we got to most of these. There's still a few in here, but I'll, I'll send those off um, to the staff, uh, who are on the panel. And then I also provide contact information at the end for additional comments or questions um, at the end of the hearing. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and move forward to the hearing portion. But one thing you should be aware of, there are, are other ways to submit an official comment for the record on this. You can do it tonight and we'll go through the procedures for that here shortly. But then you can also submit a comment via my waters, uh, which was in the public notice of this, uh, link to my waters. Um, it's under submission HP nine dash zero C nine zero H four nine five Q. Or you can send it by mail, uh, to Eagle Water Resources Division, Gaylord District Office, twenty-one hundred West M thirty-two, Gaylord, Michigan, four nine seven three five. And the comment period after the public hearing will be open for ten days, uh, which will be June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and kick off the hearing portion. Scott, do you want to, um, read the hearing statement to get this started?
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate that. But good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott Rasmussen and I am the district representative in the Water Resource Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. Eagle, for short, uh, for Charlevoix County at the time this application was submitted. I will be serving as a hearings officer for this public hearing on the Eagle submission number HP nine zero C nine zero H four nine five Q. As we said earlier, with me tonight is Joe Haas, Water Resource Division Cadillac and Gaylord District Supervisor and Aaron Edmonton, District Representative, now covering Charlevoix County. Describe how this, uh, hearing will work tonight. I'll be giving some background information about why we are here. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I'll outline the procedure, uh, procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide comments. And we will spend the majority of our time listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read a closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resource Division is responsible for administering, administering a variety of programs that help protect internal lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks and building in a designated critical dune area, wetland or floodplain. The law governing these responsibilities is the National Resource and Environmental Protection Act, nineteen ninety-four, PA four fifty-one, as amended, referred to as Act four fifty-one. We're here tonight because Scott Endeavour Law, Cordine Annex LLC, have proposed the following. To excavate and dredge thirteen hundred and thirty-three cubic yards from uplands and the stream to construct a one point zero one acre pond in the, in the location of the historic pond. Also proposes a control structure and an overflow spillway. The project will impact zero point one three eight acres of wetlands. Mitigation is not proposed. The purpose of the hearing. In order for the permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by Part three oh one in the lakes and streams and Part three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty-one. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the streams and wetlands. When reviewing an application for a permit under the provisions of Part three oh one in the lakes and streams of Act four fifty-one, Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by Section three oh one oh six of Part three oh one. The department shall issue permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or repairing rights. The department shall not grant a permit if the project proposed will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. Part three oh one rules are two eight one dot eight one four environmental assessment is rule four. And in each application for a permit, all existing potential adverse environmental effects shall be determined. And the department shall not issue a permit unless the department determines both of the following. That the adverse impact to the public trust, repairing rights and the environment will be minimal, that a feasible and prudent alternative is not available. When reviewing an application for a permit under the provisions of Part three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty-one, Eagle is charged to make the following indications as required by Section three oh three eleven of Part three oh three. A permit for an activity listed in Section three oh three oh four should not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest, that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity and that the activity overall is overall lawful. A permit should not be issued unless it is shown that unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. A permit should not be issued unless the applicant shows either of the following. Excuse me. That the proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in a wetland and a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in Scott Endeavour Law, Cordine Annex LLC application for an in-channel pond an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle cannot only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there is widespread support or objection to a project. In a moment, I will outline the procedures for taking your comments. Before I do so, I need to make notice that this public hearing was published in the Potaski New Review on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the Zoom bot, Zoom toolbar. And to ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. First, the applicant and/or the consultant has, had, already had a chance to describe the proposed project. Second, we will call on those who have indicated in their registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call, call on all those who raise their hand in the Zoom toolbar if they would like to make a comment if they haven't already been called upon. As a reminder, if you are participating in this hearing by telephone only, follow the directions of your moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You may also submit your comments to Eagle via my waters, email or US mail. When all comments have been completed, we will ask anyone else if they would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin to your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given five minutes to make their comments. We will indicate to you when you're, when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments at the, and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that all courteous, that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is here to provide you a fair opportunity to express your comments on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. How the information will be used. The hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider making in this decision on whether or not to permit on the proposed project. Period for this public hearing is open for ten days from the date of the hearing. And seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, ten-day public comment period will also be considered an Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to issue a permit for the project as proposed or with modifications or send a letter of denial. You may find out the decision by checking the Eagle My Waters website and searching for the application number HP nine zero C nine zero H four nine five Q. Thank you for your attention. We will be, begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement.
All right, thank you, Scott. Um, yeah, Scott had mentioned, I have a list of names who, when they registered, indicated they want to make a statement tonight, uh, list of three names. So we're gonna start with those. I'll read off the first name and then who's next. And then go on to the next name. Um, and once we get through those names, anybody, uh, else who is on the line, you're welcome to raise your hand uh, in Zoom and we'll call on you in turn and you can make your comment. And again, once your name is called, you know, we'll unmute you on our end. You'll, can unmute yourself and then begin. Uh, I'll be keeping, keeping track of time. We're gonna have five minutes per person uh, to make a comment and I'll give you a heads up when there's about one minute left. Also, please identify your name and affiliation if you have one. Uh, and with that, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Oh, the other thing I was going to mention is that although I believe in the announcement, it said the hearing goes till seven, we're gonna go, you know, basically until everybody has had a chance to make a comment, just, just so you know, in case we're getting close to seven and you're getting nervous about it, we, we're gonna make sure that everybody has an opportunity to make a comment tonight. So with that, uh, first person, uh, up is Luanne Cosma and then Casey Cook after Luanne. So Luanne, we're gonna unmute you on our end and then you can unmute yourself and you can begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, there's a little echo, but we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna turn off the other one. Okay, I can't hear myself now. Can I? I can. Excuse me. Yeah, my name's Luanne Cosma. I'm a near neighbor, um, about three docks down from, uh, the law's residence and, um, just maybe half and, half a mile from this proposed pond project and, um, I will also write written comments. Um, thank you very much for holding this hearing tonight. We really appreciate it. We didn't get this opportunity with other projects of the laws and, uh, much bigger projects, in fact. Um, I urge Eagle to deny the permit. It's not in the public interest, uh, to obstruct and destruct Woods Creek, which runs into Lake Charlevoix by damming it and creating an artificial warm pond, which then would just, um, outlet right into Woods Creek. So you're not just impacting Woods Creek as tip of the mitt. Excuse me, has, has, uh, written to you, but also Lake Charlevoix. This pond project is just one smaller project that the applicants are developing as part of a much, much larger development project, a corporate resort. Uh, some of it, a lot of it in residential zoning. The much larger project should have been submitted along with this application as, as well as other applications. And because that's not been submitted, I don't think that Eagle can review properly the total impact of this project on the environment. The other parts of the much larger project include a dining and event facility over the waters of Lake Charlevoix, uh, which was already permitted but, um, by Mr. Rasmussen. But as Mr. Haas has said, it was done erroneously and without proper, uh, um, environmental review. And he cannot even, um, um, defend that decision. I think that needs to be, uh, revisited and that permit denied as well. Uh, it included a, a permanent excavated artificial boat basin and channel not too far from this proposed pond. Um, and it should ultimately be denied. The other things, uh, part of this resort complex is a golf course, a golf course, uh, clubhouse, residential cabins, a pool and a spa outside the clubhouse. And all of this is for the applicant's, um, employees, charitable foundation and other guests, not residential use, uh, which is also a local township issue. I have provided, um, a, a communication between the laws with, um, the Hayes Township Supervisor with Eagle in the past. Uh, I'll just read from it briefly. What he says, uh, to Mr. Van Zee, the township supervisor a couple of years ago is, uh, one of the main goals of buying what is now over four hundred acres was to allow people from our charitable foundation, our employees, family and friends, the opportunity to benefit from this property, blah, blah, blah. Um, he also says, um, our future plans include zip lines, horse barn for trail riding and therapeutic activity, a dining facility for guests and events, a winery facility, fly fishing lake and possible golf holes, all private use for friends, family, charity and local organizations as we see fit. So there's a much bigger plan at play. They say that they have a master plan. Um, you need to demand to see that nap master planned. It's, it's not just one pond feature. It's, it's a much bigger project. The trout pond project is not dependent on being located in a wetland. Um, wetlands near Lake Charlevoix are so important to water quality of the lake, as are the streams. And I agree with Tip of the Mitz comments that ponds should not outlet to cold water streams. Um, I think it's an unacceptable proposal and I appreciate this chance to, um, give these comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Luanne. All right, next up is Casey Cook and then followed by Steve Voice. Casey, we're gonna, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can go ahead and begin when you're ready.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Casey Cook and I'm here tonight representing Tip of the Mitt Watership Council and its members. Wetlands are some of our most valuable resources. They are places of beauty that contribute greatly to the overall health of our environment and our quality of life. They provide untold functions and values that become increasingly important as we continue to lose them. According to the Michigan Wetlands Protection Act, a permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that an unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resource. Although there were once with a Although there once was a pond on site over the last seventy years or so, the property has become host to invaluable wetland resources. The project, as submitted, will significantly impact those wetlands and perpet, perpetuate conditions that cause adverse impact to aquatic ecosystems through the further alteration of area hydrology and ecology. Siding ponds within natural buffer areas and wetlands degrade their functions and may interrupt surface water and groundwater flow when soils are disturbed for insulation. In addition, during large rain events, breaches of sizable ponds can cause downstream erosion and degradation due to high volumes and velocity of discharges. Furthermore, the applicant wishes to construct a cold water trout pond. However, the proposed plans are not conducive for successfully sustaining trout and other cold water species. According to the DNR Fisheries Department, a minimum depth of twelve, twelve feet or more is required for trout and other cold water species. A minimum, minimum percentage of the surface area must lie at such depths in order to provide a sufficient amount of dissolved oxygen in the winter and a range of temperatures in the summer that fish need in order to survive. Lastly, relocation of Woods Creek could result in downstream impacts, including impacts to Lake Charlevoi, which can include sedimentation, temperature alterations, and habitat conversions that could adversely impact wildlife and fisheries, as well as water quality within the stream and lake. Per Part three oh three Rule two A, a permit can only be issued if an unacceptable disruption to aquatic resources will not occur, and the applicant has also demonstrated either of the following. A, the proposed activity is primarily dependent on being in a wetland, or B, there are no feasible and prudent alternatives to the proposed activity. The creation of a pond is not primarily dependent on being placed in a wetland, and there are a number of feasible and prudent alternatives to the proposed activity that should be further explored. Potential alternatives include the no-action alternative, which could include addressing the concerns raised through other avenues such as limiting access through fencing, which would certainly avoid significant adverse impacts to the water resources. Another alternative would be to modify designs to allow for a pond to be constructed entirely within upland portions of the property without connecting to the surrounding streams or wetlands, and with the best management practices outlined in our written comments. The Watership Council believes that the proposed project is ill-suited to the project purposes of creating a trout pond, addressing potential future concerns with beavers, and protecting against liability for a potential attractive nuisance for the reasons outlined in our letter. As a result, the Watership Council recommends denial of the project as proposed and encourages the applicant to explore alternatives to address their concerns and further their development goal. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Casey. All right, next up, I have, uh, Steve Voice. Steve, did you have a comment, or did you indicate you wanted to speak for the purposes of the presentation that you gave earlier? You're unmuted if you're able to.
Oh, there, um, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Uh, no, I had done that primarily for the, um, for the opening comments, but I guess the, to, in response to the, just to address two of the comments that were made, the, um, that, as far as I know, there were no public comments submitted on the, uh, on the Bartlett Pond downstream, and, and that has already been an alteration of the, of the situation of, you know, Woods Creek, and it's and others, uh, historical features. So the, the creek has been altered, and I guess on, you know, with respect to the cold water part, that's something we've all pointed out is that the, you know, we have the Artesian Wild, we've got the Unnamed Creek coming in, we're digging it to a depth of ten feet, which we consulted with the DNR Fisheries folks, and we spoke with Heather, I forgot her last name, who indicated ten feet was sufficient. If twelve feet is necessary, we're certainly happy to dig it that deep if that's something that's necessary to protect the cold water feature, which is exactly what we're trying to protect. You know, so I, you know, and then regarding, you know, this corporate retreat, that's not the subject, you know, I, I don't know that there's a corporate retreat, but even if there is a corporate retreat, it's not the subject of this proposal. We've made a proposal to do a pond, and anything else that is regulated also has to go through that process, and other things have gone through the permitting process and been permitted. Um, so it's, you know, the, the, the Eagle doesn't have any oversight over, you know, master plans for property, especially when a lot of it is not even regulated. But anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the comment. All right, as far, that's all I have on my list, as far as people who have pre-registered to make a comment. If there's anyone else on the line who would like to make a comment tonight, you can go ahead and raise your hand in Zoom. Uh, it doesn't look like we have anyone on the phone, but in case I'm missing something, if you're on the phone, you can select pound two to raise your hand in Zoom, and we will unmute you in turn. So it looks like we have a couple people. So first off, uh, Spencer McCormick, we're gonna unmute you, and it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
All right, uh, thank you, Ryan. Uh, my name is Spencer McCormick. I'm, I'm the Great Lakes Policy Specialist with Little Travis Bay Bands, Wadawaw Indians. Uh, LTBB strongly opposes the proposed project. The negative effects of damming streams are well-known and documented thoroughly, which Eagle is fully aware. A water control structure will likely alter the thermal regime downstream of the structure, as well as the input into Lake Charlevoi to warmer temperatures, further exacerbating climate change, and potentially altering aquatic community structure. Dams inhibit the movement of aquatic organisms upstream and downstream, potentially obstructing their passage to spawning locations and other habitats critical for life history stages. Dams block the downstream transfer of sediment, which affects nutrient loading and habitat structure. Additionally, the dredging and removal of wetlands compromises the ecological benefits that wetlands provide, including increased water quality and unique habitats. Uh, furthermore, the applicant refers to this project as a restoration project with respect to the pond and water control structure. Representing this application as a restoration project in any regard is a striking fallacy which cannot be taken seriously by Eagle. Restoration is always a term used when discussing the removal of dams, and LTBB will add that the removal of dams has been the contemporary trend due to their well-known negative impacts. The rightful composition of this waterway is a free-flowing stream, not an obstructed, fragmented waterway which negatively impacts the ecological processes in aquatic communities that inhabit this stream. Furthermore, I will, um, you know, just regarding what Steve said about the neighboring water control structure, I think that, um, saying that just because the waterway is obstructed downstream, that it's okay to put in a control structure here is a, you know, faulty rationale, and that should not be, you know, um, that should not be permitted. Um, i- if, you know, and if, if anything, we should be, uh, taking more care for this stream and not, um, putting any more degradation into the system. So Eagle must deny this application. As collectively as a society, we've been putting a lot of time, energy, and money into the restoration of streams and permitting that this water control structure would be a step in the opposite direction. So thank you very much.
Well, thanks for your comments, Spencer. All right, uh, next up, Jennifer McKay. You are unmuted on our end.
Thank you, Ryan. Um, this is Jennifer McKay. I'm the Policy Director at Tip of the Mitt Watership Council. I would just like to build on my colleague Casey Cook's comments, as well as Spencer McCormick's comments. The applicant describes the property as, uh, historic feature. However, again, it's not possible to restore a historic feature that has not existed on the landscape for nearly eighty years. The landscape has clearly changed and has been modified over time, and the property now hosts a wetland ecosystem that provides the important functions and values that benefit society as a whole. And like Spencer said, um, the Watership Council fully supports dam removals done in an appropriate way and has worked on multiple dam removals throughout our service area. In addition, it should also be noted that permitting decisions should be grounded in site-specific considerations and applications of the relevant laws, and not on permitting decisions made on neighboring or similar properties. So, thank you.
Thanks for the comment, Jennifer. All right, is there anybody else who would like to make a comment tonight? I don't have any other hands raised at this point. We'll give it another couple minutes, or a couple seconds, few seconds, a little time. In case anybody wants to raise their hand, and while, uh, while that may be happening, I just want to let folks know, we're going to identify the other ways to make a comment again, in case you decided that you didn't want to make a comment, but you wanted to write it in, or wanted to do something different. We'll go over those other ways to make a comment here shortly. So just wanted to make sure people are aware of that. Um, again, I don't see anybody on the phone, but if you're on the phone, you can select pound two to raise your hand. I'm still not seeing any raised hands, so we're gonna go ahead and move on, um, from the hearing portion, uh, of this tonight. So Scott, would you please read the closing statement for tonight?
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you for your comments and your cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of this hearing, you may submit additional written comments until June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Following the close of the public hearing, or the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just to remind those that may still want to submit a comment, comments can be submitted via My Waters email or US mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
All right, thank you, Scott. Like, uh, Scott had mentioned, we have, uh, the other ways up here to submit an official comment through My Waters by mail, uh, Eagle Water Resources Division, Gaylord District Office, twenty one hundred West M thirty-two, Gaylord, Michigan, four nine seven three five, and then be open for ten days until June seventeenth. And then, uh, if your question didn't get answered, or you have additional questions, uh, you can contact a Scott or Joe. Scott's contact information is up here. Phone number is nine eight nine three one three nine seven oh eight, uh, or by email at R A S M U S S O N S at Michigan dot gov, or Joe Haas at nine eight nine three three zero nine two five two, or H A A S J one at Michigan dot gov. For his email. And so with that, Joe, did you have any closing comments, I guess, for us tonight before we wrap up?
Number to unmute. Um, just brief, real briefly, I just want to thank everyone for taking the time this evening to participate. This, uh, public hearing process can be a, a bit stilted when you're making comments and we're not allowed to talk back or, or have an open dialogue other than the, the Q and A, and that seems a, a little bit amended at times, but, um, hopefully everybody got their questions answered. And again, if you don't, you can reach out to Scott or I for further discussion on this before a decision is made. Um, we have not made a decision on this file. Um, that's, this is part of that. Y- your comments as locals, as folks who are living in the area, um, you know, um, are valuable to us. I'm, um, reading a book recently, um, by Roger Payne, and it's totally unrelated to this. It's a book about whales, but I, a, a comment or a statement in this book really caught my eye that I think is worth repeating here, and that's that any observant local knows more than any visiting scientist. Always, no exceptions. Um, and that's, we could probably replace the word scientist there with regulator, right? So, um, you guys at, at the local level know more than us about the local community, um, and that input is valuable. So we really appreciate your comments, and just know that we do take them, uh, in consideration during our review. So thanks again for participating.
Yeah, thanks for those comments, Joe. I put, uh, Scott and Joe's contact information, uh, back up here, uh, just in case you didn't get a chance to write it down, and I just want to let folks know too that this is being recorded, this hearing, and it'll be on uh, our website, our YouTube site in a couple days here, so you can, uh, revisit it at that time, uh, and, and just want to reiterate what Joe said, to thank you all for participating and asking the questions, and then for our panelists for being here, uh, tonight. I hope everybody has a great evening, and that wraps up the hearing. Thank you.